Welcome back, Madam Blow-Trower.[13.82][13.82](Laughter.)
I think a few tips along the way.
Did you really?
To share with the city.
Great. Mr. Dyer will not be here today. Mr. Moss is on business with the Navy.
Wow.
And Mrs. Kane is in Richmond. And I assume Mr. Earn will be here shortly. So, the mayor is out of town on city business. So, doesn't get back till late this evening. First order of business is the, I think Ms. Henley had some comments she wanted to make.
Yes, since we don't have council comments until, I guess our next meeting won't be until June, I just wanted to kind of bring to your attention there's an issue at Sandbridge. You have two letters at your table, one from the Sandbridge Beach Business Association and one from the Civic League. Last Thursday evening, I was invited to be at the meeting for the Business Association and Karen Lasly and Chris from her staff along with me. And we talked with them about this issue of the very, very large houses that have been built at Sandbridge and a number of them are being marketed as event homes. Where this fits into everything since Sandbridge is all zoned residential, not commercial. You know, where is that line between a residential facility and what is occurring at this point is kind of the thing that's a little cloudy at this time. Then Saturday morning, I met with the Civic League and you have a copy of a motion they unanimously adopted asking that we sort of investigate the situation. I know that Karen Lasly, last year when she met with the group down there in this issue of event homes, she kind of tentatively said, "Well, three events a year would perhaps be fit with the zoning," but that was sort of tentative. I don't really, I think one of the issues is probably that we don't have an event home in our zoning ordinance, and so what is it? But, you know, it's all zoned residential. All the housing down there is built as single-family homes. And that's what, when they're built, they are built as single-family homes. I understand the latest one sleeps up to 40. And as single-family homes, the issue of parking is one of the really big issues that's creating a problem in that area because they are only required to have what the single-family requirement is. And these events are marketed up to 100 people. And so, providing for parking is one of the issues that the neighbors are, you know, really having some issues with because it's only on-street parking and a lot of places don't have on-street parking. And, you know, that's something we've been trying to get out of Sandbridge as it is. But anyway, as well as parking in other places. So, parking is a major issue. Noise is a major issue sometimes with these events. We sort of have a nonexistent noise ordinance. And so, when the police are called, you know, there's really not too much they can do. And then the trash are the three things that seem to be mentioned the most, plus the very fact that, you know, it is a residential community. And what's that line between residential and commercial? I don't know. And Karen is working on it and, you know, has been very much aware of this issue now for a couple of years. And so, she is going to be coming up the best she can with some suggestions and then asking for your input. And we'll meet with all of these folks. And the Civic League has a committee now designated to try to work with it. So, it's an issue that you're probably going to be hearing about. And I just wanted to give you a heads up to some of the background at this point. We're just trying to see what that middle ground is that is acceptable for the situation.
All right.
Can I get a, what a definition, what the definition is for event?
Big part.
The definition of an event.
There is no definition.
Weddings, graduations, sorority parties, anything.
Like a graduation could be a family celebration.
Right. And there are things that fit with the family, and that's kind of the problem that Karen's been having.
Yeah, that's, I think that the definition of an event will be really important to define because Dave Hansen could have a daughter that graduates from college and they want to have a family celebration. Well, is that an event?
I think the, and that's why Karen-
And it could be a big family.
And that's why Karen had sort of last year said, "Well, up to three a year would maybe be acceptable within, you know, a residential area." And, well, Bill, I know he's worked with it.
Yeah, it's like a lot of things. It's really a matter of quantity rather than quality. For instance, I have a house, I can have a party. I mean, there's nothing that says I can't have parties all the time. But if you start charging people money to use your house as a party location rather than as a single-family dwelling, that crosses the line. The problem is, suppose I just like to have a lot of parties and I have them every week or something like that. And what Karen was doing is trying to strike a balance there. And really, that balance is tilted more toward the favoring the residential aspect of it because, you know, a lot of people probably do have more than three parties a year, but she's saying, you know, not just limited to parties, but all these gatherings. So, the problem is defining what an event is or a gathering or something and maybe not even using that term to regulate. But what, we need to decide what we're regulating, number one. And number two, to what degree would we be regulating? And it's a very difficult problem. I'm sure it's cropped up in other localities, which is someplace we, something we typically do, check other places. But we do all consider this a priority item. I imagine it's pretty disturbing when your neighbor has, you know, 50 people over at their house every, every few days or, you know, a week or something like that, so.
Well, I think a lot of it comes in the way they're marketing. I mean, they're now marketing for events. And, you know, in a residential neighborhood, the house next to you is not going to be rented out every week for an event. This is what I think Karen was making the distinction. When does it become an assembly hall? You know, when is it a grand affairs, you know, or a hotel that's also looking to rent for these kinds of events? And so, when, when is it stopped being residential and gets to be commercial? And I don't know what that answer is and what that line is, but this is what we're kind of wrestling with.
I think it's going to be a big part of getting through this, making that definition.
Oh, it is, yeah. And determining what it is. But, you know, it's all zoned residential. It's, and I don't know what the tourist, I keep looking at John because you're in that business, you know, what is a, when is it a mini hotel and when is it a, I don't know. I think we just, we are going to have to look at what parameters are right for what this community should be.
The code really defines it by the length of stay. I think after you get to 30 days, then it becomes residential. I don't know how that is applicable to the Sandbridge component, but I mean that-
Well, Sandbridge has historically, you know, had weekly rentals, weekly rentals during the summer, usually, you know, families renting for a week, and that's worked out, you know, all these years. And maybe monthly rentals in the winter. But now, I think it's, you know, some three-day rentals and that kind of thing. And, you know, it's creating some conflicts. So, I just wanted you all to know what the background is as you, you know, look at this. And Karen will be working on with Bill and everybody else, trying to get the background that we might need to work on something like this.
I was going to mention, you could also ask her about in Chick's Beach, they also have the same problem where it's all residential and it's just one house, that you get suddenly 30, 40, and it's noisy at night, let their dogs, some bring dogs out, and the language and so forth. And they brought that, and I also addressed it with Karen. But what was happening is they were marketing that for, you know, a weekend, for one week. And their doctors, lawyers, all these people, and then on this weekend, it's all night till day, party on the beach.
Well, I think, you know, we'll also, of course, I've had people say, "Well, what about the fire codes?" I'm sure the fire marshal and, you know, because we certainly have safety issues, what is the experience from the police department? You know, some folks, you know, make two or three calls in a, over one party and say, you know, they, because there's really not anything they can do except say, "Hold it down." So, I don't know. I think we really need to have a lot of feedback from these other departments as well, so.
And the other big issue to look at is the parking.
The parking is very big. Very big.
And a lot of it can be controlled by the parking. You can't have it-
If it gets controlled right.
You can't have it so, I mean, because each house only has room for so many parking spots because the parcels are very small.
I think they, you know, like maybe park at Little Island or someplace else and then van pull back.
Or the market.
All right. The next item is Mayor's Energy Advisory Commission. Laurie Herrick, who's the Energy Management Administrator, and Clay Burnick from the Environment and Sustainability Administrator are here. Who's going to start off?
Just as a way of introduction, Clay and Laurie, as you said, Mr. Vice Mayor here to present this. The committee was formed back in 2009. They've been doing some great work. You have at your place the committee's report, which is dated June 15, and then the PowerPoint that Clay and Laurie are going to go over with you. But this has really taken on, I think, some significant importance, as you'll see, in terms of just what our own energy bill is. And, but it's a much bigger issue than that in terms of how it relates to air quality and sea level rise and the functioning of the regional economy. It's really a global issue. So, we're trying to do our part. And what we're seeing around the country really is that cities are taking a leadership on these issues since we don't have a national energy policy. We're kind of doing it, each city on its own. So, we've been making some real progress.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. It's good to be back with you today. We're going to go through a lot of slides fairly quickly today, and I know each of you has a copy of the presentation. So, if we're going along and you want something, give us a timeout or raise your hand and we'll stop and try to explain as we go. We're going to break up the presentation a little bit. I'm going to do some of the background and some of the overview. Laurie is going to get into some of the details on what we as a city organization have been doing with our energy usage and trying to become more efficient. And then we'll go through the recommendations from the advisory committee. Before we start though, I would like to recognize two folks from the committee who are here today. Dave Baloat, who works with Cassidy and Associates, former military but a local resident as well. And then Karen Forjay, who you all know, I think, from Laney River Now. She's also been a member of the group from the beginning. In terms of background, the Joint Energy Committee assembled an energy plan back in 2009. And Laurie's going to talk to you some more details about that committee in a few minutes. But that group really got started back in '07. And the city came up with jointly, between city organization and schools, these five general goals that aligned with the state's energy plan at that time. That plan, as Mr. Spoor mentioned, we're kind of in a doldrum period on this in Richmond. They haven't updated it as much. And some of these recommendations have still, still have validity but are in the process of changing. Basically, looking at independence, looking at conservation and clean fuel technologies, and reducing government consumption. The goal set back then was 15% by the year 2025. Expanding energy education to overcome barriers for energy efficiency and conservation, reducing greenhouse gas emissions. Back then, the goal was 30%. I think we're a little bit short on that one. And then the last one, of course, capitalizing on what economic development opportunities might occur because of what we do with energy work. And I know the mayor was particularly excited about this when he created the advisory committee. Predating the committee itself, the city also appointed an alternative energy task force back in 2010. And that group put together a series of recommendations primarily looking at things that we could do to be in a position of support and alignment with efforts such as offshore energy development, whether that be wind or offshore oil or natural gas exploration, looking at ways we could try to attract new businesses, to capitalize on things that already exist in the region, given our maritime industry and our focus in Hampton Roads. And then also what we could start to do in terms of looking at energy conservation, both in city government but also with the community as a whole, residential and business. That report came out in 2010 and kind of provided some background that led to the formation of the Mayor's Energy Committee. When that group was put together, it was given a council direction to analyze energy demand in the city organization as well as community, exploring potential sources of supply, consider how those supply sources might impact us economically and environmentally, looking forward to see where supply might not keep pace with demand, looking at options to close the gap, and then how we could position the city to be a leader in a more sustainable, intelligent energy future as we go forward. So, with that kind of background, then the mayor chose to create this Energy Advisory Committee back in September of 2013 and was assigned the task to come up and focus on five basic areas. Update on where we are with offshore energy and timelines, how that might relate to what's going on at the federal and state level. Promoting energy conservation programs in the city and the community. Tracking what we're doing with our energy usage administration, as well as looking at legislative and policy issues that the city could pick up on and help us with energy-related issues. Provide some energy-related advisory and support activities, which the committee has really stepped up. And I think you're going to be excited to hear some of their recommendations moving forward here. And then how we could look at some new opportunities and actions as we go into the future. This list captures members, both current and past, who've been part of the group. And it's been a very diverse group, a lot of good ideas, a lot of energy from these energy folks to really come together and give us some forward thinking. And I think when we presented the report that you have final today as draft to the mayor back at the end of April, there was a lot of synergy and a lot of excitement and really wanting to move forward. One of the comments that I remember the mayor captured particularly that I thought kind of hit on this, we of course have been focusing a lot on biomedical as a major area of expansion, but he thinks that the potential may be out there to start looking at energy in the same way as we go forward. In terms of staff liaisons, Laurie and myself have been primary staff liaisons, also assisted with Bob because of the work that he does in Richmond. And just that lobbying piece that we really need to bring into the picture. Mark Podolinski works with Laurie over in Public Works. And then Ray White is the energy person in economic development. And it's been a good team effort. So, with that, where are we currently? I'm going to turn it over to Laurie.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor and members of council. We're going to go through just kind of the municipal operations side of things. So, when you take a look at our energy payments, they're quite large. Our biggest vendor of energy is Dominion Electric. Is right around 15 million a year. And you can see some of the trends that are going on here. Since our office was created, we've seen a $4.1 million increase in the cost of energy. So, it's had our attention. While we're working to reduce, the cost is going up at the same time. So, it's a bit of a battle. So, the Joint Energy Committee was formed back in 2007. Mr. Hanson actually locks us in a room for about two hours every month, and we talk about energy. And we look at reports, and we look at technology, and we figure out what the right direction is for municipal operations. And we have the schools in there at the same time. So, we have about 20 folks in the room taking a look at all the different options and opportunities. What else have we done? Energy Star is a program that's actually larger than just the label that you see on your refrigerator and your washing machine. You can actually become a partner, and that's exactly what the, what the city did back in 2011. And we had, we made a commitment, which was things that we were already doing. It was an easy commitment for us because we're committed to measuring and tracking our performance and having an energy plan and spreading the word about what's the right thing to do with regard to energy. We invested in energy software. We went live back in 2012, and it has lots of bells and whistles. We got the most comprehensive software program that we could find so we can analyze what the energy use is right now and also what it will be in the future. So, we can project things like what the budget should be if we have a 5% increase in the cost of the fuel portion of the Dominion bill. I mean, we really can break it down quite well. We could actually split buildings by square feet and who occupies them. So, everybody in the city now gets an energy report, whether their department pays the bill or not. So, there's a lot of really good information. There's dashboards that are here. We can just right-click and cut and paste now, whereas before we were making this stuff from scratch. We actually won an award. Ms. Phillips, she's not in the room yet, but she actually was in California to receive the award during another conference. And this was an award from the Government Finance Officers Association. And they don't give this award every year. It was the first time they had given this particular award in like four years. And so, it was a good example of what the right thing is to do with regard to tracking your energy use. As a result of this project, we also have reduced keying over 1,000 bills. We bring in a lot of our bills in electronically from both Dominion and Virginia Natural Gas. And then we're able to provide our energy reports. So, we're over 90 energy reports a month that are going out to various folks because the software will automatically email it out and it can go out in various formats. What else have we done? We partnered with the auditor's office to audit our bills, and we had some really good results. We took a look at some of the taxes that were on there that were incorrect, some of the light poles that were actually not ours that were showing up on our bills, took a look at how we can reduce some facility charges and fix some rate schedules. Now, it doesn't look like a lot considering we had, what, a $15 million bill from Electric alone and 24 total from all of the energy sources combined. But when you add it up over 10 years, it does add up. So, when you fix things on energy bills, it sticks, and it's a good thing. So, that's what we focus a lot of our time on now, using the software. We're making a lot of investment in our buildings up front now. So, you now, you now have a requirement to build lead on our new construction, and there's a lot of benefits to that. You'll see a lot of our new buildings now when you go out to tour those. Those are all being designed to lead. You're also seeing many buildings that have enough land around them being designed to include geothermal. And this will really have some savings over the long haul. City fleet efforts is, it's a big, it's a big job. We have over 2 million gallons of fuel being used each year. And so, we really want to focus on those 3,500 vehicles that are out there. So, the fleet team has done a lot of really good work and research on finding GPS technology. So, you're going to see over 1,000 vehicles with GPS on them by the end of this fiscal year. You're going to see, actually, that's going to be at the end of the calendar year. But you'll see, a lot of them are already out there now on a lot of the white fleet. And we have hybrid vehicles out there. If you haven't seen them, there's about 80 of those that are out there on the road right now. And then, of course, every time they go to order a new vehicle, the shop is making sure that it's the right size for the right job. We don't need an F-250 for somebody who's out doing inspections on residential homes, those kind of things. What else are we doing? City energy training. We bring a lot of staff members over into the Advanced Technology Center, and we lock them in a room for about four hours, and we teach them, and then we test them, and they're all energy champions when they leave the room. And we just reached 500 energy champions. So, you're seeing those out there now in every facility and every department. Energy Star Buildings, you can actually certify your building using the program, and we have five buildings to date that are certified, which means they're 35% more efficient than an average building. And Joint Energy Committee, they're the group that have been developing the goals for our buildings and for our staff. So, back in 2009 was when we started our first five years, and we had a goal of cutting 10%. And back in FY13, we were able to announce that we had over 15%. So, this was based on just the electric use on our, on our buildings. Now, we're working to expand that goal now that we have more data with the energy software. Our current goal is to not increase our energy use at all, even though we're opening new buildings. But as of right now, our new benchmark year is 2013, and we're down about 2.3%. So, even while we're opening new buildings, we're still doing a really good job of keeping energy costs down. Virginia Beach City Public Schools, they're actually a bit ahead of us. They have been working on this since 2007. They've reduced their energy use by 21%, even while they've been increasing their building space. So, their building space has actually increased by 9%. Altogether with the lead program that they utilize as well, they're up over 1.6 million square feet that will be certified as lead. So, we expect that space to be pretty efficient. So, but they have also put in $14 million worth of dollars to, you know, invest in these energy upgrades. And so, they've really done a good job of putting their money into the schools to try and get the LEDs out there and the HVAC and all the systems as they can updated and as efficient as possible. So, they were able to bring down their energy costs about 1.8 million. They also have other things that they're doing. They too have a software program that's helping their program. And they're doing things like a four-day workday, you know, that's during the summer when they're able to like reduce their administrative staff. They're using the Energy Star portfolio, and they've actually certified 28 facilities. And so, they're, you're going to see a lot of different facilities in the city being utilizing, utilizing the Energy Star program. It's a big program. We've actually been mentioned nationally as being the top Energy Star region in the country. So, we're making some headway, and we're in that library training other businesses on how to do the same program. We also have the Energy Efficient Building Special Tax Rate Program. This comes out of the state code. And so, what this does is it allows somebody who owns, whether it's a commercial or a residential property, to get a reduction on their taxes of 15 cents per every, every dollar. And so, you have a lot of folks that are out there that are energy efficient, that are looking at this and applying for it. And all of that goes through our planning department. And Clay's going to talk about the recommendations.
Okay, we're going to run through these fairly quickly because right now, again, the way the group put together the recommendations, the whole committee broke up into subcommittees. We had seven different subcommittees looking at different aspects, everything from conservation to how the military is doing with energy conservation, how we could come alongside and partner with that, solar and wind ideas, looking at our new power franchise agreement, looking at municipal energy goals, and then things that would require some enabling legislation through the state. Energy Conservation developed a series of goals and objectives to develop a plan to increase community conservation, make recommendations to changes to state and city codes, and then implementing some kind of award program that could be like a mayor's energy award to capitalize on the kind of things that the community is doing, residential and business. Also, we're looking at other community programs. City of Boston has one that's particularly significant in some of the things they're doing. Some specific things, looking at baseline energy data for the community. Laurie talked to you about what we have for the city organization. We really need to beef that up and do some more on the community side. Designing and implementing some kind of an education outreach program that would address our aging housing stock. We've already started some conversations with Department of Housing and Neighborhood Preservation in that area. And then looking at communication programs to get public support. There's some good models in Virginia. County of Arlington, City of Charlottesville have been doing some really innovative things in that area, and we've had those folks down and they've briefed our energy committee. And then of looking at how we can expand the Energy Star challenge, using some of those tools that are online to bring it into, to focus working with residents and businesses. Along with that, I guess the main thing that we're looking at on the, on the city employee side is we're hoping to kick off a new program called C of Change. C standing for Sustainable Employee Actions. And that would be a voluntary program to engage our city employees to not only help us save energy in the city organization and do other sustainability practices, but be able to take those things home, explain those to their neighbors, kind of be an outreach for that. And then we want to really try to beef up what we can do working with realtors and builders. We've had some good dialogue with the Local Realtors Association and with Tywater Builders' Association on how we could maybe look at expanding the MLS listings so they could show an energy rating and credit could be given by appraisers when they do property appraisals for that. Other parts of the country are doing that. Some other things that were key, we're looking at incentives. They wanted to look at how we might be able to incentivize commercial building owners to look at Energy Star standards. One would be a possibility to maybe look at no increase in city tax assessments for five years or have some kind of a special review process. Also, looking at a tax credit program and maybe correct and improve that. This would require some general assembly action. Right now, because of changes in state building codes- Right now, because of changes in state building codes, things that were really pushing the envelope and resulting in residents getting these energy savings are now becoming standard requirements. So if we don't continue to upgrade the requirements that go with this, more and more people are going to qualify by doing less and less. And we need to find a way to keep it current with the changing technology. And then maybe create a program, this idea was similar to what Charlottesville has done, to create a program to provide home energy audits with recommendations for energy efficiency improvements. There may be some low interest loans or other banking finance opportunities to work with residents to do that in their, in their homes. Also looking at maybe having free energy audits for energy improvements for other nonprofits or faith community, some of our major areas where we can get more word of mouth out there and spread the word. On underbuilding code enforcement, there was a recognition that we need to really rigorously enforce this. One example that came to mind was when a plumbing inspector goes out, many times he is there and he'll be inspecting a shower unit or a tub enclosure. And behind that unit, we don't really know whether they insulated the wall properly or not. And, and that's something that's, that's not part of our standard inspection process. So a person may think they're getting an energy efficient home only to find they're not. And, and look at how we might be able to review the current buildings code and see where there may be some energy efficiency improvements that we can either pursue, given the current code, or as revisions to the code come along. Under the DOD military recommendation was to try to implement a program that expands energy initiatives in partnership with the military. We were fortunate not only to have Dave as a member of that subcommittee, but our own Craig Quigley, who's real involved, of course, in, in the military, in Hampton Roads. And through that, they were able to make some inroads, working with Oceana on pursuing some large-scale solar projects. DOD has some mandates that by the year 2020, twenty percent of energy consumption needs to come from renewable sources. So DOD is really hot to try to develop these kind of initiatives all over the country. We were able to identify some properties surrounding Oceana, either on land, on the base or on some of the land where they have development easements on those properties, where there may be potential, working with Dominion to establish a fairly significant solar installation. Along with that, the solar subcommittee started looking at how we might be able to expand options for that in the city, besides looking at the military, looking at what we might be able to do as a highly visible solar array somewhere on city property, looking at some kind of a purchase power agreement. We would like to do something with a convention center, but right now it doesn't fit the requirements because of our roof design and the age of the building. If I have that accurate, Laurie? And then also, yeah, we'd need, we'd need a new roof there. And also the potential for solar carports, it's places like shopping malls, schools, or maybe like at the amphitheater. A community-wide solar roof assessment using some of the GIS information we have and our mapping might show where we have potential sites for larger scale solar. And we're actually having a meeting in the next couple of weeks to start pursuing that. The wind subcommittee was looking at primarily things we could do to help support offshore wind development. And as you all know, from the most recent cost for fuel, I guess, and the efforts that Dominion had initially started with their plans offshore for the first test turbines, that project's been delayed and put on hold until costs become more effective. In the meantime, though, we still think there's some opportunities to look at in Virginia Beach itself. A lot of these may relate to some land use or siting issues, where the lines come ashore, how do they tie into the grid, what kind of land uses are appropriate near those, what kind of spin-off economic development opportunities might we be able to start positioning ourselves on as, as that kind of thing not only moves forward off Virginia, but because of where Hampton Roads is located, we could become kind of the port of call for development of similar efforts elsewhere in the mid-Atlantic region. Some of their specific recommendations, again, what we can do in terms of looking at incentivizing and growing small-scale wind energy in Virginia Beach and what might be some of those barriers in our city code or in homeowner association agreements. We already have provisions in the zoning ordinance that allows small-scale wind in Virginia Beach. And with the next one, I'm going to turn this one to Laurie because I know she's been working with the city staff in terms of negotiating our franchise agreement.
So the current franchise agreement is up for renegotiation with Dominion. The last one we did was twenty years ago. So right now, we're working to determine what do we need to think about for the next twenty years. And so one of the, the biggest conversation is how can we get more things undergrounded with as much support from Dominion as possible? So that's the biggest priority going in. And then we've got some, some folks that are asking about tree trimming and how we can improve some of the landscaping issues that we're having and a few other little areas. So we will know more by the end of this calendar year. Subcommittee number six, municipal energy goals. So this is where the Joint Energy Committee has been spending a bit of time. And so the Mayor's Energy Advisory Committee had two liaisons that joined our meetings and kind of listened to our conversations and went over our goals and gave us some really good input on what we were working on. And so right now, we're holding our energy use levels, as I said earlier, level back to the fiscal year two thousand and thirteen. And so we're doing a really good job at that. Our year-end report should be out after we get all those final utility bills in July. So we're hoping to get you a report the first week of September. Subcommittee number seven, legislative recommendations. Every time a subcommittee ran into an issue, it was most likely a state issue with regard to us being a Dillon Rule state. And so Bob has a long list of legislative things. So we want to make sure that we're really out there and supporting a number of initiatives to include adoption of higher building codes at the state level. We are a bit behind at the state level on the building codes that could have been adopted. We also want to make sure that appraisers are required to give value for certain things, like a solar on your, on your roof or that water, or that energy efficient air conditioning unit. There's a lot of things that they aren't giving a lot of value for. So we're trying to figure out how to get, get those into the appraisals. There's issues with the energy efficient tax program, so we want to see if we can correct some of the language that's on that. There's also a lot of barriers right now to solar, especially in the residential areas. A lot of folks that live in areas that have HOAs most likely have some sort of language that talks about solar and where you can and cannot put it. And right now, it requires almost the entire neighborhood to vote for solar, to make a change and set up a simple majority. And so we're hopeful that that's something that Bob can help, help change at the state level. No pressure, right? And then, so we want to have a little bit more freedom with solar and solar panels and where they can be at. We also have a lot of ideas with regard to promoting alternative energy resources in the whole state. And so there's natural gas infrastructure conversations that we need to understand and talk about. There's also some incentives and tax credits that are out there that are available in other states that are not available in our state. And then we want to see more of a support from the state level for energy efficiency and conservation efforts as a whole. So a lot of these things you'll read about in the newspaper. I'm not telling you anything you probably haven't already heard, but there's a lot of things that we need to change at the state level with regard to incentives for electric vehicles and charging stations, utility-based energy conservation programs, mandates and incentives for renewable energy, and then, again, that expansion of a statewide energy conservation program. Additional recommendations that the group talked about and recommended was more of a citywide office. Right now, we have, Clay is in planning. And then I'm in public works and I'm focused on internal operations. So we really don't have anybody out there in the community on a day-to-day basis working with the community folks. So one of the recommendations was to create an office and put all of the staff in one place and either have it out of the office of the mayor or office of the city manager so it wasn't inside of a department. So that was the recommendations that we received towards the end of our report. So in conclusion, so we determined that there is an overarching need for community focus. I think the community felt pretty, the committee felt very comfortable with the efforts that's going on in-house, you know, on the municipal operations side. But we all agreed that there's not enough out in the community right now. The other thing that we wanted to make sure that you knew is that they're still in place, is still an ongoing committee. And so they are also in position to take on other issues for evaluation. So some of the ones that came up were offshore energy, waste of energy, biofuels, economic development opportunities. All those kind of things haven't been talked about and recommendations haven't been made, but it could be something that they might, you might want from them in the future. Any questions?
I have a question. The federal tax exemption or, I'm not sure, exemption or credit that currently exists. I understand that the legislation has not been passed to renew that, is that correct?
That's correct.
When, when is that supposed to happen?
I think it's, it's being phased out in the current calendar year, but I'll double check to make sure. But I know it's getting smaller and smaller each year.
Is there any effort to get that renewed or is anybody, Bob, do you know?
I have concerted effort on this. Some of the environmental organizations, some of the energy-focused groups, nonprofits are really pushing that. But I'm not aware of any effort going on here in Virginia with our, our delegation in Washington to pursue changes at this time.
Mr. Vice Mayor, Members of Council. There is an effort nationally. Most of the wind projects, a lot of the solar projects are basically, their business model is predicated on a renewable power standard going forward. The credits, if they don't get the credits, a lot of their projects become less feasible. It is under active discussion by the Congress at this time. It's the usual, it's really funny, you can have very conservative Republicans from states that have a lot of wind development and sort of out of character with their party, they're actually very partial to it. So it cuts across party lines. It does cost money to the state, to the federal treasury, though. But it's basically something that has to be looked at every year or so. And it makes long-term business decisions for a billion-dollar or a million-dollar development very troublesome.
Yeah, it's hard to finance them without having those taxes.
Most of them are unfinanceable, actually, so.
Anybody else have any questions, Amelia?
Yes, just wanted to ask about the conclusion that you have to do with community-focused programs, as you mentioned, the comprehensive service. What about educating that? How are you looking at that besides?
One of the things we're doing right now, we're, we're looking closely at a program that Charlottesville, that I mentioned, has. And there's also a similar effort that, that communities in Richmond metro area are doing. And a lot of these are involving certifying home inspectors to go out and evaluate homes, determine what kind of energy efficiency measures can be taken in these properties. It creates a tremendous business opportunity for that segment of our building community to get involved in. Along with that, then, the finance industry has come alongside and is looking at low-interest loans or, or grant programs, depending upon need and availability to pay, to kind of match up that assessment. And they've had a lot of success in renovating structures and making those kind of improvements. So Laurie's office, our staff, along with Andy Friedman's folks, are trying to work together with those folks, see what kind of program opportunities there may be here. There are some training sessions being held up in Richmond later in July that we'll be able to watch and see how those go forward. But we'd really like to get something like that started here.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Interesting presentation. Mr. Spoor, you want to?
Yes, sir. This next one, you know, about three weeks ago today, we had a tremendous rainfall. It was a cell that was focused mainly over the resort area. We had almost five and a half inches of rain in a four-hour period. We had experienced some localized flooding down there. And since we've been analyzing that area for the last couple of years, we thought it would be good to give you kind of a recap on what happened, what are some of the potential solutions, which are very expensive. And so John Fowler and Phil Roers are here to walk you through the brief.
Welcome, gentlemen. All right, well, thank you. Well, Vice Mayor Jones, Members of Council, Mr. Spoor, thank you for the opportunity to be here to talk about this central beach district drainage. Phil's going to be giving the bulk of his presentation. I'm going to give, give some, some introductory remarks. And I'll start off by kind of going over what this area is and why we're taking a look at it. As you can see, it's bounded to the north by about Twenty-third Street, to the west by Birdneck Road, to the south by Seventeenth Street, picks up a little extra area, and to the east by, by Pacific Avenue. Now, as we all know, there's a lot, lot of initiatives being planned in that area, as well as some well-known drainage problems that are really some rather severe problems. So for those reasons, we've been looking at this for the last year or so. Now, I'd like to point out from a drainage point of view, the first thing you do when you look at an area like this is say, where does the water go and where can it go? No matter where you take the water here, you're draining it to a tidal body of water. If you go east, you're going to the ocean. If you go north, you're going up by Alaskan Road to a branch of Lynn Haven River. If you go west on the Birdneck, you go into a branch of Lynn Haven River. And if you go south through the Lake Holly's, you eventually come to Rudy Inlet. What that means is you have to deal with storm high tides and sea level rise when you're designing a system here. And I am looking for the little clicker here that may as well over there, which brings me to the point that sea level rise is something that our city recognizes, is not something we're shying away with. This council had the foresight to authorize and fund a major initiative to develop a comprehensive response to sea level rise. That's underway right now. We're in the risk assessment part of that. But at the same time, we still have a lot of areas around the city that just have inadequate drainage systems. Whether they're affected by tides or not, in this particular area, they are affected by tides. So when you have an area with an inadequate drainage system that's affected by storm tides and sea level rise, it's really pretty straightforward to reconcile those three things and come up with answers. The answers may be complex and it may be expensive, but it's pretty straightforward to reconcile the three things. Now, by way of explanation, if you recall back when we were briefing on Eastern Shore Drive, there's really three main ways to address sea level rise, land use, where you control what gets built and where, accommodation, you elect to continue to live in certain flood-prone areas, but maybe you elevate homes, you have early warning systems for flood. And the big one is the engineered protection measures. And these measures, levees, flood walls, and flood gates, essentially they're barriers. They're just building barriers to keep the high seas, the high tides out of the areas that you don't want to flood. But once you do that, you pretty much have to pump the interior regions to get the storm water out. You build a barrier around it. It rains, that rain has to go somewhere. So you're pretty much locked in to pump storm drain systems. And that's really nothing new for us here at the beach. Again, this slide was with the Eastern Shore Drive. It's our beautiful resort beach, and it really is. Got the boardwalk down here at Rudy, runs up to about Thirty-Ninth Street. The outer face is a flood wall. And that flood wall actually continues up to Fifty-seventh Street. And then there's an engineered dune system from Fifty-seventh to Eighty-Ninth. That forms a barrier that keeps, you know, when the seas, when there's a storm and the sea elevation is high, it keeps the ocean from flooding out the north beach and the resort area. But what a lot of folks don't realize is we then have four major pump stations to take the drainage from behind that line and discharge it out to the ocean. One at Seventy-Ninth, one at Sixty-first, one at Forty-second, and one at Sixteenth Street. So when you're building these systems, you either put in the storm water and the pumps and the line of protection at the same time, or you have to put in the pump drainage systems first. And that's sort of the way that we're evolving. On Eastern Shore Drive, where the design and acquisition is authorized, to put in the trunk storm drain system and the pump stations. When we come back with the final results of this central beach, I believe we'll have a similar recommendation to put in a pump system. Now, why is that? Sea level right now is rising, according to NOAA around here, about a quarter of an inch a year. a year. So five years, it's going to rise about that much. Now, VIMS to the General Assembly says the Commonwealth should plan for a foot and a half sea level rise occurring over the next 20 to 50 years. Regardless, we have time to plan out where our lines of protection may have to be, that's the focus of the comprehensive response to sea level rise plan. In the meantime, in areas like Central Beach, where we have recurrent flooding, I'm not sure what the 55 is, but anyhow, we have recurrent flooding, we need to do something about it now. It has inadequate drainage system, we need to upgrade that. But while we do it, it's going to be done primarily with pumps, and those pump systems will be designed so that they operate with sea level rise. And when and if the comprehensive response to sea level rise plan indicates where we should build and what the nature of those lines of protection would be, then they would be put in at some time in the future. Now, if there's any questions on that part, I'll be happy to answer it. If not, I'm going to turn it over to Phil, and he'll walk you through the details of what's going on in the Central Beach.
Thank you, John. Good afternoon, Mr. Vice Mayor and members of council. Bringing it back to the Central Beach District, John defined the outline, it's roughly 300 acres. It's been developed for a long time. How we really got here is, of course, we've been aware and participating in a lot of the opportunities down there, the arena, the dome site, the 19th Street corridor, we knew a lot of potential existed in this area. We also knew at the same time, it was a very old system. It currently doesn't conform to our current standards, both in terms of water quality and water quality. And as mentioned, it's also affected by tide. So with that kind of stage, we decided it'd be appropriate for us to take a look at the whole system, try to get our handle on it, and figure out what the problems are. But as Jim mentioned, we also had an event just a few weeks ago, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead, but here's the Central Beach District master plan that shows all that potential, and really the reason why we need to start looking at this in a comprehensive way. Here is the exact existing system, and the point to garner from this, and I'll bring it back up, is most of it, the largest area here, drains past the Museum of Contemporary Art in that ditch or swale drainage way that runs down to Beach Garden Park and ultimately under Laskin Road. That's what drains the majority of this 300 acres. When we had that event back on June 2nd, here's a picture of what it looks like at 21st and Baltic during that event. It just so happened that the tides were not really high, but the tides were high enough to block it, or to slow the draining of the system. You go back to this map here, the existing system, you see the blue pipes, that's what's in the ground today, but this is actually a graphical result of a model run. So they run a stormwater model over the system and see where the ponding would occur. And what the model tells us after we put it all together is that when we take a two-year stormwater rain event, just a rain event that's got a 50% chance of happening every year, and a 10-year tidal condition at the outfall, what happens is you see these yellow dots, that's where the system fails, that's where you start getting ponding in the street. What we're talking about is 21st and Baltic in this picture, and sure enough, on June 2nd, we had some significant ponding. This was not a two-year event, this was a significant event. Got a graphic here in a minute to show you what the whole storm looked like, but basically in a three-hour period, they got five inches of rain at the resort. While we were down here, it was raining, but up there, it was really raining. So this kind of brings us back to the current standards point in a previous slide. The area is not even designed to our current standards. We attempt to provide a 10-year storm level of service on our roadways, so that our roadways are still passable when we're receiving those 10-year rainfall events. And then higher than that, we try to set the finished floors up above the 100-year flowway, and when you get those really intense storms, then the street becomes your flow path, comes out of the pipes and stays in the street, we hope. So we could call this a 100-year event, you know, members of staff were taking a look at some of the detailed numbers at the National Weather Service and so forth, and if you really take the peak 30 minutes of the storm, it was a 500-year event. That's good and fine, but the point is, is it dramatically exceeds what we currently would design for. We only designed for a 10-year storm. When you get rainfalls like this, you're going to get some ponding in the street, but we want to at least try to get back to a point where during the 10-year storm, our roads are passable and our homes are safe. As I mentioned, at the same time of this rain, the tides weren't high, this is a shot of the drainage way near Mocha, the tide from Little Neck Creek had not propagated all the way up, all the way up that ditch to 25th Street or 4th Street. But what had happened was, there was sufficient tide at the bottom of the ditch that when this rain started to flow, it just backed up. So it's the combination of that slowing of the drainage down with the tide, and frankly, an inadequate system that was built long ago and is way out of spec that's causing these problems at that eastern end of the district. This is a graphic put together by our Operations Division Public Works, they do a lot of after-action work, and they work in real time. They use our rain gauge network really as a monitor during storms. But this is kind of a contour map, and you can see where the intense rain was, about five inches of rain in the magenta. Down here at the courthouse, we had less than three inches, and it makes a big difference. There's also a tidal graph that indicates what the tides were doing at this time. And if you look and squint, you can see all the little hazard marks, those are all the reports of ponding throughout the city. And it kind of lines up with this chart that John showed you back in April last year during the Eastern Shore Drive presentation, where we brought forward the concept of the comprehensive response plan for sea level rise. These are the areas typically throughout the city that we see tidal interaction when we get those strong storm tides, where we see some blockage in our drainage system. And at the time, we had told you Old Beach, or what we're now calling the Central Beach District, is indeed one of those areas. So as I said, we started a master planning effort, we began it late in 2012, you know, the primary reason was to make sure we had a good understanding of what is out there, and then through modeling, figure out what some potential solutions are. They have completed that report and draft, I brought a copy just so you'll see the three-inch stack of paper that resulted from this. We're currently asking them to refine a few of the alternatives that I'm going to show you. And then ultimately, what we need to do is come up with some sort of phased implementation plan. Some of these may be standalone projects, others, we're merely identifying the solution as a means to make sure we can capitalize on opportunities and maybe bundle some of these improvement projects with future redevelopment. So again, here's that existing condition map. The system that's been built around the convention center, inside of the arena, that's a relatively new system, and it drains independently into that floodway out to Little Neck Creek. And then the older portion, as you head towards Pacific Avenue, also drains at that same location, but it enters the floodway at Park Avenue. And then there's a small section that currently drains through the North Lake Holly and out into Rudy Inlet. So I'm going to show you the first alternative, and that's to pair off, potentially pair off, the easternmost piece of this district. And the next three alternatives I'm going to show you, they all assume that this phase is a standalone phase. And the reason for that is, you may recall, we built the pump station at 16th Street, John just mentioned it. It's a very high-capacity pump station, it's a very large-capacity wet well that's actually under the boardwalk in the form of a 10-foot diameter pipe that actually serves as that pump station's wet well to pump against. There is excess capacity in it, and so the proposal here would be to take the area east of Baltic Avenue and south of 22nd Street, and find a way to route it into that system and take advantage of that excess capacity in the existing pump station, and it outfalls into the ocean. So this is going to stay common in all the rest of these alternatives as something that would be a standalone. So we're actually referring to this as Phase 1. You know, whether or not it ultimately gets built, it will be your decision or a collective decision, but we think this is a good Phase 1. You see the price estimate of $7.5 million with an asterisk. You know, let me explain the asterisk. The $7.5 million is the cost of that pipe and its installation. It is not the cost of streetscaping above it, tree wells and LED lights, it's not, doesn't include, right now, because we haven't designed it, it doesn't include the cost of utility offsets and relocations that would be necessary to install this, nor does it have the right-of-way that might be needed in temporary construction easements and so forth. So what I'm telling you is, the $7.5 million is the backbone construction cost of just getting that pipe in the ground. But having heard what I just said, I'm sure you all realize that by the time we get done with utility relocations and offsets, purchasing temporary construction easements, this cost clearly could double before we're done. And yet, there's yet one more facet to this. Right now, we're hopeful that we're able to route that storm water to the boardwalk, get it into that pipe by gravity. Now, it's going to take a 96-inch pipe to carry this much water, that could be 248s or 336s, but getting a pipe of that diameter underneath the duck banks in Atlantic and Pacific, and all the other conflicts that are under the pavement between here and there, might prove to be too much. We haven't designed it, we don't know where the route, I mean, the route, we might be able to find a route, and we might be able to go 336-inch pipes instead of 196. But the double asterisk here would be, if we can't get there by gravity, we might have to lift it with a pump to get it to go to the boardwalk, and that, again, is going to impact the price, and it clearly could be at $15 million or more at that point. So that's yet to be determined. But it is an opportunity to take this problematic area out of the district system, get it discharged to the ocean, and eliminate that influence of tide on at least this area. The next three alternatives are variations on the same theme, and that is to do some system improvements, to improve the capacity of the system, but also to do that first step John was mentioning, and that is to find a pump solution. And that pump solution allows us to not feel the impacts of sea level rise or tide, and really, it's tide at this point to think about. Tide has been slowing this drainage down for decades. There has been ponding at 21st and Baltic for quite a while during these summer thunderstorm events, and it's largely and often related to the fact that the thunderstorm happens when the tide is in a position not to let the water flow quickly. So you can think about it in terms of sea level rise, but as Dave likes to point out, sea level rise over the next decade or so is, you know, about this much. That's not the problem. The problem is the tides and their influence on this system today. Not that it's, not that it's a daily event, but when we get those thunder showers in the summer that are, you know, greater than our pipe's capacity, and then we have that tide, it's a real problem. So this is the first attempt at a potential solution to isolate the area from tides and provide positive drainage. It's quite costly, the asterisk is the same asterisk. This is the cost of the pipes and the pumps, and the backfill and so forth, but it in no way reflects the total project cost, which is going to involve utility relocations and potential rights of way and temporary easements and so forth. We don't really favor this alternative, or really the next one. The next one's just a deviation where we would not route any of the storm water into Little Neck, but through, again, a series of improvements and pumps, we'd route it all into the headwaters of Linkhorn Bay. It's slightly better, you know, our concern, obviously, with the previous concept, is the Lynn Haven Basin has its own problems right now with sea level rise, higher tides, storm drainage in particular. Getting that water, getting this water, preventing this water from entering that system, would be of some benefit to that system. So we think the best solution is to take it east, and that's the most expensive solution, obviously. But it's the long-term positive solution that really would make a difference and really speaks to resilience. And again, it's the same asterisk. And we wouldn't do this all at once as one project at $100 million. Again, with a master plan, what we're doing is we're laying the groundwork and trying to find those opportunities so as things happen, we can plan logically and maybe build that next link in the chain and ultimately get there. John reminded us in a meeting, talking about this briefing the other day, this sounds like a huge number, and it is, and it will get bigger because that asterisk's real. But North Beach drainage was a very similar story. North Beach had significant drainage problems. There wasn't a drainage system installed in North Beach when it was first built, and they had low spots, and we built a line of protection, and the way we approached it was we created a master plan, and we phased a number of projects over a number of years. And in the end, we spent over $50 million at the north end, and we fixed it, and it's a much better drainage situation. So while this looks like a huge number, we're not here today advocating for a project at 100-plus million dollars to do this, we're letting you know that we're developing a master plan that will provide a blueprint or a roadmap that we might be able to phase out, bundle with some redevelopment opportunities, and accomplish over a longer period. So the next steps are to complete the master plan, as I said, we're asking them to refine a few of the alternatives, you know, in particular, this outfall location was chosen somewhat arbitrarily, but to make all of our ocean outfalls somewhat equidistant down the oceanfront. There's likely to be a lower-cost route, and so we're asking them to check those alternatives and see if we can't find a better, better-valued project. So we need to complete that master plan, but we also need to coordinate with the sea level rise comprehensive study. They're going to be coming up with some tidal levels that we ought to be of concern, or we ought to take into consideration. We need to backcheck this master plan against those findings. And then we need, as I say, develop an implementation plan, and I suspect it'll take a little while. But what we're going to propose in the upcoming CIP for management to consider, and hopefully ultimately you all to consider, and that is to go ahead and begin and initiate that Phase 1. At least get it to a point where we can begin design and really test out the feasibility of that system. As these points say, we see that, because that capacity exists in the 16th Street pump station, we see that as really a best-value type project, is something we can immediately get after, and it'll make a big difference. 21st and Baltic, it ponds frequently, the water goes away quickly, but it is somewhat of a gateway to our resort, it's a critical intersection, and we think it's worth taking a look at at least. So that's what, we're not asking for any decisions today or any direction, we just wanted to let you know what we were doing, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
John's got a question.
Thank you.
Go back to the, just any of the 100 million.
Okay. 100?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It really doesn't matter which one, but we've had an awful lot of discussions about trying to create a sense of arrival when you come into the resort.
Sure.
And really talking in particular about the swale that's between Birdneck Road and the visitor center. And I think that the item that got the people most excited about was a water feature of some sort, I mean, you're coming into the resort city, and it's a huge area, so you can't really do, you've got to have something really big to have it impactful. So within your discussions and your design, is there any way you can take a look at seeing if you could maybe use that area as some type of a BMP capacity?
I think that's probably a very good potential. The question coming down to it is, where are we going to isolate the tide? And I think we would want to isolate it north of the interstate, we wouldn't want that tide backing up into that interstate. And although we can address these water quantity issues and these flooding issues, we still have a big question mark as to how we're going to comply with water quality issues. And so I think a free pond with a fountain in that median area might very well lend itself to an ultimate build-out.
I mean, that would really be, I think that's really the only thing that's going to be large enough to give you a really, a wow factor.
Sailboat in the middle or something.
Yeah, I mean, you could do some neat stuff there. All right, well, thank you.
I was kind of thinking something similar to what John was thinking, and it was pretty simplistic, and I'm not, I'm not an engineer, so I'm sure that it is simplistic in my thinking, my thinking is, but it just seems to me... But it just seems to me that when, if you have a major storm and you have high tide at the same time, that you're going to have trouble getting the water out, no matter what size pipe that you have.
Yes, sir.
You're talking about a 96-inch pipe, that's the size of the Lake Gaston Pipeline.
Yes, sir.
And, and, uh, but you're going to have trouble getting that water out. So either creating some kind of a major pond or BMP seems to be the, where you could store that water until the tide goes out and you can get it out of there, seems to me to be the solu-, uh, at least part of the solution.
I think it is part of the solution, but you have to add pumps, because we're so limited with elevation. That pond is going to be only.
You're going to have to elevate that pond.
But perhaps, but when you start elevating things, then you have to tie driveways in, and, and you, you really escalate costs when you do that. It's clearly something we, we, we agree with and should look at.
Yeah.
I mean, when you look at the area, when you go and walk it, it's a pretty large parcel. I mean, I think it's like four or five acres of, of land that sits between the interstate there that's, you know, not being used nor will ever be used for anything important. So I.
It might even take more land than that, to tell you the truth.
Well, I mean, you got a good start.
Right. Yeah, we've thought about the Lake Holly's. They're awfully sensitive. There's some, some first floors that aren't too much higher than that, those lakes around them. We have to be very careful about that.
Uh, yes, Barbara.
I'm much more simplistic than Louis. Just looking at this map, there's a lot of stuff happening in this particular area. A whole lot of stuff. I mean, John's got a lot going on down there. How are we coordinating this with all these other projects that we're doing? Like, I mean, isn't this the right, very area that the Pacific Avenue work is being done in now?
It is.
I mean, you're talking a lot of stuff that's being put underground. At that time, how in the world is the stormwater pipes going to interact with all of that?
Right.
I mean, shouldn't that stormwater come first and then that? How are we coordinating everything else that we're doing in this area?
Well, we sit in offices next to each other to begin with, but, uh, but we understand that, and, and this is part of the reason why we wanted to get on with this master plan, because we saw things happening and we needed to have a blueprint, a, a roadmap so that we don't miss those opportunities.
Aren't we behind?
We, we are, but, 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 but more because Pacific got accelerated than we are late, I, I would probably say. But, you know, we, we wouldn't, in this proposal in Phase One, we're calling it, we would not be tearing up Pacific Avenue. We might have to trench across it once. We, if we're lucky enough to be able to get under those duck banks with a gravity line, it might be one open cut across Pacific Avenue, but we're not going to have to tear up what we've done on Pacific Avenue. This is the area from Pacific to Baltic. The area east of Pacific is already accommodated.
But all these other projects that are going on in this area, I mean.
The, the dome site renovate, or the dome site?
Going to be ahead of the curve, I hope, in all of that.
That's our hope, yes. This would be the area. I mean, that's really the reason that we're on this master plan the way we are is, you know, Phase One, that, part of that is the big parking deck potentially for the dome site. So we need to have this solution in mind when that proposal comes in in the next year.
But the money.
Right.
Certainly got to be considered, I mean, I would think with all of these projects in that area, the money has to be factored in into all of those projects as well.
Right. But without a master plan, I don't think we could ever get there. So, so that's, that, we're trying to lay that groundwork.
Ms. Wilson has a question.
In all of this, is there any thought being given to having asphalt that drains? And I was, we just traveled in Italy, and their major A1 has been rebuilt, and it's, that's their major spine.
Sure.
They have asphalt that drains.
We, we call it porous pavement, and, and it is in use in Virginia and in Virginia Beach.
Because down there, it's, it's a concrete jungle. I mean, it's, everything's paved over.
The, the, the reality, though, unfortunately, is our groundwater is so high that when you try to drain through pavement, the, the, the voids that are beneath the pavement and above the groundwater, that total volume is insufficient to store a storm. So you, you might be able to get the first flush for a water quality effect, but as far as flood control, we would not recommend relying on it. You'd have to have a very large field. It, it, it's just not practical.
Well, I, I know it's not the whole thing, but as far as an, an incremental piece of it.
Sure, sure. As, as we streetscape these areas.
As we're doing these things, you know, maybe we should be doing some of this porous asphalt so that, not just there, but other places in the city. And that helps us with, with all that we have with TMDL, too.
Yes, and it really is a, a water quality type of issue where we can get that, that first flush into the ground instead of into our streams.
Anybody else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item is Mrs. Phillips, who is going to.
Tell us about the money.
Tell us about the money.
We're, we are getting very close to the end of the fiscal year, so the interest builds in terms of Patty's report every month, and this is the good one.
Okay. Good afternoon. You all should have received in your package on Friday the financial statements for the city through May. And remember, we are on a cash basis, and we will be converting to accrual basis over the months through August, through the mid of August. So in some cases, the amount you're going to see is 11 months, in some cases, you're seeing a lesser amount of revenue. So it's not proportional, I just wanted to point out as we move forward. Okay, so we're just going to focus on the general fund here today, keep it brief. And just as a snapshot here, if you looked at nothing else, the first paragraph of the transmittal letter and this chart tells the full story. This past month, in May, we collected $223 million in revenue. Some of it was early collection of real estate, so it's a little, little high for May. And in fact, through, through yesterday, we've collected another 88 million. So money is coming in. This is the end of the year, things are, it's starting to even out. You know, we've always seen the difference. In this case, 811 million in actual revenue and 952 in actual expenditures. Always been a difference. That gap is starting to close now, uh, towards the end of the year. Expenditures were 66 million in May, and, and revenues were 223. So this is one of those months where it's going in the right direction. Most months are not this way. Just again, I'll just briefly show you the chart. Is that where we are, Aaron?
Yes.
Okay. The chart, again, just reiterates where we are. 811 million in revenue and a budget of a billion, 12.1 million. And we are actually a little ahead of schedule because of this early collection of real estate. We're at 80%, 80.2 versus our trend line of 75.9. Okay, just, just as a matter, a reminder, we still have $201 million to collect, of which we've gotten 88 as of yesterday. But we have the timing difference we talked to, and real, personal property is coming in very strong as well, and you'll see that in a few minutes. Real estate revenue continues to follow the trend line. Tax relief for the elderly, 15 million is included in the revenue number. Personal property tax is the good news, is that we have a budget of 83.8 million, and the levy is 17% greater than it was last year. So it was, as we'll see in a few minutes, we fully expect personal property to be over budget, which is the hardest project. Last year, we were under budget, and I think the year before as well. But I did want to caution that general sales tax, business license, telecommunications, and cigarette tax will all be under budget. And just, we're going to kind of walk through some of our key revenue items. As a reminder, these dark blue lines are the actual annual collections of the past year. So you can see that trend line on real estate. The light blue is where we are as of May of each year, and the yellow, of course, is the current year budget for real estate. And where the revenues are coming in extremely well, you can see that red trend line, how it's turned up. And in fact, as of yesterday, we have collected 441 million total. So we've, we will exceed budget on real estate as they continue to process. We have collected at this point, as of yesterday, 87.9 million. So through May, we had 55.8 million. As of today, we've exceeded the budget, and we will continue to collect money on personal property for the next couple of months, and we will accrue back anything paid on these bills through the middle of August. So that'll be reflected in the final analysis. And as I said earlier, we were under budget significantly in the two prior years on this Okay, general sales tax. We are 2.9% up on an actual basis compared to the last year. And then we got the revenue item, I think, last week for, for June, and that means we're over 3% up from last year, which is good news. However, you can see that yellow line is so high, we will not make that budget. We will be under between one and a half and $2 million on that revenue. Utility tax, that's pretty stable. We think we'll be right at budget. Telecommunications, you've, we've seen that kind of up and down over the years. You see this yellow, this light blue line continues to drop down, the trend line continues to go down, the budget is higher. We project that that will also be one to one and a half million under budget. Okay? Business license. Last year, we were over budget at the end of the year, just slightly. But this, uh, this revenue item will not make budget, and we could be three to three and a half million under budget on this one. Hotel room taxes, 4% up from last year. This is the general fund portion of this chart. The general fund receives 2% of the 8%, and that's $6 million, and we will exceed the budget slightly. And looking at the total hotel room taxes, the full 8% plus a dollar room night, this is everything, $27 million budget, and we've collected 25.1. And we fully expect this to be slightly over budget by year end. Restaurant meal taxes, can see that red line straight across here, we're following our trend line. The budget is significantly higher, but we think based on the trend line, that light blue bar going up each month, that we will be right, slightly over budget. Yes, sir?
Hey, was, is, did I remember correctly, did a letter come from your office that indicated that the estimate for the prepared foods from groceries is about 6% of the total?
Of total.
Of the total.
Total restaurant tax, yeah.
That's right.
And that was estimated by the Commissioner of Revenue. We looked at, he looked at, which was, you know, arduous, I think, but a couple of years were slightly over six, and close to seven, and so we just kind of looked at it and said it's roughly six.
When we're looking at that, it's not, the majority of that is still going to be.
From restaurants.
The accident was out now. Because that was a big.
We'll, we'll share that.
That was a big question that they had.
Yeah.
I mean, what it doesn't take is the, you know, the fast food type of, of.
Yeah.
Receipts, you know, your McDonald's and your Burger Kings and stuff.
This would be just from grocery stores.
We've always been concerned about, I mean, are we really getting this thing blown up with grocery store receipts? And at least based on that analysis, it would be mine.
Yes.
Not that big of a deal.
Not, not as much as they thought.
Yeah.
Right. And you saw that the tax rate for meals tax can vary by locality, that, and so that's what I think someone noticed, so there was an explanation there.
Thank you.
So restaurant meal tax expected to either meet or slightly exceed budget. And this is a citywide tax, almost $60 million, very significant. And this chart in here just says how we split it up, as a reminder, most of it goes to the general fund. Some goes to tip fund and the tap fund and open space. Okay? And this is a summary. I, I hope you like the Christmas colors here. The, the green is just kind of a reminder, those revenue items, we think will be over budget. The red are those that we project will be under budget. But at the end of the day, after the dust settles, we're projecting at least as of this point in time, that we'll be 3 million or so under budget on the general fund on revenues because of primarily, I guess, the business license is the driver there. The budget was, and again, I will reiterate that all these revenue items, or almost all of them, have revenues in excess of what they were last year. They're doing well. The budget was estimated higher than what's actually coming in, so there's not a depression going on in here. It's, uh, the budget was a little anticipated.
Business license tax is down. It's just down from what we estimate.
Exactly. And I'll go back to that business license, Aaron, please. And just, just a reminder, as of May, we've collected more than we have last year altogether. So the revenues are, are doing well, but the budget, that yellow line, is, is significantly higher than the past. So, okay. Okay, switching now to expenditures. Our trend line on the expenditures is doing well. We are at 89.2% of our expenditure budget, and we're usually around 91.5%. So that's, uh, we do project significantly under budget by the end of the year, somewhere the 21 to or so million under budget. And that's all been anticipated, you might remember, when the budget for FY '16 was prepared. So it's, it's, uh, okay, you can move that. That we think that the general fund balance, after all accruals and so forth, will probably be in the 9% range. You know, we've got, uh, we appropriated money for next year for the CIP. Revenues are a little bit under, so that's kind of where that sifts out. It's within council's policy, but I would not say there's any excess there, you know, for other uses. And again, I'm just going to recap with my favorite chart here, that revenues are slightly under, expenditures are way in the green, they're going to be under by 2% or so. The city will end up well. And we will give you a letter where we are this time next month. I'm not sure we'll be doing a formal briefing because we're going to be, it's, it's not representative of the year until we get to August because of all these accruals. But we are close enough at the end of the year now that the projections, we're starting to feel pretty comfortable with them, and we haven't changed them much over the last month or so. So we're, we're seeing the money coming in, we're feeling good, but we, you know, there's significant, um, under revenue on a couple of items.
Looking at your previous slide, 20, I guess, the expenditures are just slightly under, but the revenues are even more under, it looks like. Is that right?
That's right. The, the revenues, it's good for expenditures to be under, it's not so good for revenues to be under.
Yeah.
Okay?
Any other, any questions, anybody? Thank you very much.
Any questions? I'm reading a newspaper article about another city last week, the difficulties that their financial staff has just in preparing the caper. Just want to say thank you for you all being so, extending your, your.
Thank you, thank you. Everyone works very hard upstairs, and we've been having a little turnover as a result of it, but they're, we got a good group up there right now.
Thank you, Peta.
Thank you.
All right. Next item is another scintillating presentation by Jack Whitney.
I'll endeavor to be scintillating. Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, this is, of course, our monthly glimpse of planning items to be heard in July, July 7th and July 14th. We have 12 items spread across those meetings, and I'll try to get through them fairly quickly, I think I can. The theme this month is going to be cheers. I think this is the first time in the history of the city that we've had two items related to distilleries in the same month. So I think that's reason for celebration, especially when you're batting cleanup at the end of a long, hot day. This month, or July, actually, Centerville, again, is getting the month off, so is Kempsville, so is Bayside, oddly enough. And another unusual situation is Rose Hall is tied with Princess Anne for the most number of items to be heard in July. So there are, a lot of things are a bit unusual in July. But let's begin in the Beach District with our first distillery, Cavalier Ventures. This is, of course, the old Cavalier Hotel. They're looking for a use permit to establish a craft distillery, which, in the hotel itself, which has had some publicity up until now. The main level will be located adjacent to the hotel lobby, as shown there, kind of, 2,600 square feet for processing of the spirits, offices, dry storage, bottling, and shipping. There'll also be a 446-square-foot tasting room, some retail space, and sales. The basement level will consist of 812 square feet of mechanical equipment and storage. The staff had recommended approval. No incentive or discounts from the staff for this particular item if it gets approved, by the way. Planning Commission also, by consent, approved it 9-0, and there was no opposition whatsoever. Moving over to Lynn Haven, WHLR Alaskan Road, this is a use permit for a private marina off Alaskan Road. The applicant would like a seven-slip private non-commercial marina at that location. The intention of the applicant is to offer slips for use by tenants of the building itself, and the possibility of some of the employees commuting by boat to work. There will be no boat sales or fuel proposed as part of this project. Staff had recommended approval. Planning Commission placed it on their consent agenda, and there was no opposition. Lynn Haven, Shore Drive Farm Market LLC, a use permit for an open-air market, the type of thing that's getting very popular around the city these days, as you're well aware. This would be located on Shore Drive, Red Tide Road, and Seashell Road. They would like to operate a farmer's market-type facility on the parking lot in the existing shopping center. Eight large vendors, 30 small vendors, three times a week between, daylight hours between 9:00 and AM and 5:00 PM. And they propose not to operate at the same time as the church, which is also located on the site. Staff had recommended approval. Planning Commission, again, placed it on their consent agenda, and there was no opposition. Heading down to Princess Anne, BT Holdings LLC and the Paul Brown Family LLC are requesting three things, actually bundled into this one. One is a zoning change, you see there the giant letter A, a zoning change from agricultural to I-2, and a use permit for a bulk storage on the area shaded there in the letter A. And then, thirdly, a zoning change from R-20 to I-1 on that little B-indicated strip to provide access to the bulk storage yard. Again, it's a bulk storage yard for operable motor vehicles, including cars, RVs, buses, boats, and trailers that are licensed and operable. It's in an ACUS area, which is, and also is encumbered by federal easements restrictions. And the, as a result of that, residential uses are prohibited on that particular site. The proposals here would be consistent, however. Planning staff had recommended approval. Planning Commission voted 11 to 0 to approve it. There was some opposition by the neighboring community.
I have a question. I'm assuming you all got transcripts?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I get those by this Friday? Are they available?
You'll have them.
Almost ready.
They're done.
So that I can get them early enough to read them?
This was one of those, like another one coming up, that there was extensive discussion, but you will have that by the end of the week. This is a change from, for the city, under the City of Virginia Beach, to the zoning ordinance to reference, this is really kind of housekeeping at the request of the Bayfront Advisory Commission. They've asked that references to the Shore Drive Corridor Plan and the Attendant Design Guidelines be inserted in the Legislative Intent Section of the Shore Drive Corridor Overlay District in Article 17 of our zoning ordinance. Those two documents are not new, we've been using them for almost 15 years. However, they have never been specifically referenced in the zoning ordinance. Nothing new, however, the Bayfront Advisory Commission is asking for the recognition of those documents in the zoning ordinance itself. Staff's recommended approval. Planning Commission, again, placed it on their consent agenda, and there was no opposition. Back on to distilleries, in this case, this is an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance to define farm distillery under the requirements for use and allowing those as a principal use in agricultural districts. This is a result of actions by the General Assembly under a Senate bill known as 1272, which created a limited distiller's license for distilleries that meet those three bulleted criteria in terms of volume, location, and so on, and ownership. This, again, comports with the General Assembly's intention in that regard.
Question. I can't keep up with all of these things that the General Assembly is doing for us in agricultural area. Now, this doesn't say anything about the basic contents, that basic ingredients having to have been raised on the farm, it just says that it has to be just zoned agricultural.
The ordinance does provide, and as well as the statute, that the, in order to qualify the ingredients used in the manufacture of spirits must be grown on the farm.
Must be grown on the farm?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's not like Seagram's or somebody else is going to be able to come in and...
Well, just looking at these three criteria, it didn't say anything about that, it just is talking about it...
It is in the ordinance, though.
Staff had recommended approval. Planning Commission placed it on their consent agenda, and there was no opposition. Moving on to the July 14th meeting, back up in the Beach District, William Feltz Land Tech Resources, Inc., off Alaskan Road, is looking for a use permit for motor vehicle rentals. An existing car wash facility that is on the site will be removed, and the site redeveloped by Enterprise Rental. It's in a Hilltop SGA, so as a result of that, the staff has been working with the applicant to ensure that there'll be no parking areas, drive aisles, and so forth between the building and the street. In other words, the building would be up close to the street than would ordinarily be the case. These types of uses are typically not encouraged in SGA, however, it's located at APZ 1, and its ACUS is greater than 75. And they're one of, this is one of the few compatible uses in that situation. Staff had recommended approval. Planning Commission placed that on their consent agenda, and there was no opposition. Back down to Princess Anne, this one will take a while to get the verbatim ready, too. It's Pine Grove Baptist Church, a use permit for a church expansion. The existing church would like to expand with an addition, 14,000 square feet, 835 seats, offices, conference room, and so forth. And the existing sanctuary will be converted into other uses such as classrooms and offices. The issue here is really parking, specifically overflow parking into the surrounding residential areas. There's been an awful lot of meetings and discussions with the community and with the church itself, and they remain ongoing, actually. Staff had recommended approval. Planning Commission, on a slightly split vote, recommended approval with conditions. Another issue on the site was the disposition of an existing house on the site, which is proposed to be demolished and used for additional parking for the church. There was opposition to that by the surrounding community, who would have rather seen the existing house remain. There was opposition. Rose Hall, Oceana South Commercial Center LLC, off of Squadron Court, this is a request for a subdivision variance having to do with access. Ordinances require lots to have direct access to a public right-of-way. What they would like to do would create one that does not, instead of being a public right-of-way, it would be accomplished through an ingress egress easement, through a subdivision process, as you can see depicted there. Staff had recommended approval. Planning Commission placed it on the consent agenda, and there was no opposition to it. Still, Rose Hall, Mr. and Mrs. Italiano, off of Drake Mill Road and London Bridge Road, are requesting a use permit for bulk storage. They've been using the property for landscape material storage for many years, however, they had never previously obtained a use permit for those uses. They are proposing screening the yard with four-foot-high vinyl fencing and landscaping, and provide access off of, through the current curb cut on London Bridge Road. Staff had recommended approval. Planning Commission placed it on its consent agenda, and there was no opposition. Remaining in Rose Hall, Happy Boxes Lynn Haven LLC, a use permit for self-storage off of South Lynn Haven Road, a three-story facility similar to the kind of new model of those that you're seeing around town. 108,000 square feet of floor area on a 36,000-square-foot footprint. The exterior of the building would be designed to resemble a large-scale office building. If you've been in the Kempsville area, you've seen one somewhat similar on Indian River Road.
[inaudible]
Yes, ma'am. So it'd be that kind of model. Staff had recommended approval. Planning Commission placed it on their consent agenda, again, and there was no opposition. And that takes us through July. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody, Mr. Spoh, you have anything else?
No, sir.
And members of council? If not, we are adjourned.